And so it tells us that we need to continue to keep a prayer on our lips at all times. For our city, for our citizens, and for ourselves. Shall we pray? Our gracious, loving Father in heaven, one that truly love all of your children, that you have planted in this earth, your world, and made in the likeness of your image. And we just so glad that you love us enough to give us life, health, and strength, and opportunities to serve you in a great capacity as our historic city and our community. And gracious Lord, we certainly love each other, and we love our city and all its residents. But we all are family, and we are that chain that you have connected together that refuse to be broken in spite of all the obstacles and problems that we face on a daily basis. So dear God, we ask for your heavenly protection over all of our citizens and our leaders as we continue to serve you in such a great manner and way that you have called us to. So Lord, have us to be ever reminded of our call to serve, and help us, Lord, to do our very best. Bless this mayor, our mayor, and our aldermen that have come together to listen to the concerns and hitches of our citizens. We ask that you may unite this board and the citizens together on one accord that we might respect each other, love each other, and serve each other as you have called us, to bless us with your peace, your love, and your unity that we may continue to serve you in such a great time as this. In the blessed name of our risen Savior, Jesus Christ, we offer this prayer to you, our Father, and redeem the Lord. Say amen.
Amen.
This woman pledged allegiance to the flag of our country.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Mayor Clerk, would you call the robe?
Alderman Dingle.
Here.
Alderwoman Harris. Alderman Astor.
Here.
Mayor Outlaw.
Here.
Alderman Kinsey.
Here.
Alderman Des.
Present.
Alderman Adam.
Here.
I was going to ask before we started the agenda, Chief Gallagher just went out. I was going to let him... Chief, would you mind kind of updating the public on where we are? Chief Gallagher.
Thank you, Mayor Outlaw. Let me also echo the words that you said earlier. Thank you so very much for the kind words about your pride for the New Bern Police Department. And I couldn't agree with you more. This morning at 10:50, the call that we never want to receive and our dispatch was received that there was shots fired and subjects down in front of the courthouse. Officers responded, obviously. I was on scene relatively soon after that, and I'd just like to describe what I saw. In context, I have been doing this job for well over 30 years. I have been involved in major case investigations to include active shooters, and I have seen crime scenes that were managed well, and I've seen them where they were not managed very well at all. What I observed this morning made me extremely proud of not just the New Bern Police Department, but the teamwork of the Public Safety Teams that have come together that included the departments that you mentioned, the Paving County Sheriff's Office and the Highway Patrol. But I'd like to add at least three more. I turned around. I saw my partners in the Fire Department standing shoulder to shoulder, ready to assist when needed. EMS was also there, providing lifesaving measures to save lives. And also, the District Attorney was out there. Obviously, that was in his backyard, and also provided us with some helpful feedback. What I can tell you is that the victims were provided aid by the officers that first arrived and then medical trained staff. Unfortunately, one of the victims, and both of the victims are from Bay Borough. They are brothers. The older of the two brothers succumbed to his injuries, and his name is Jordan McDaniels. And his younger brother, who's 21 years of age, Jaheem McDaniels, is fighting for his life now. I do not know his conditions. Last I heard, that he is in Greenville at this time. We were able to identify who the suspect was based in part from witnesses that were on scene, but also with the help of our investigative staff that were able to identify the suspect as a 19-year-old Vance Borough subject by the name of Dakota Wright. Dakota Wright was taken into custody within several hours after this and was charged with the following: one, open count of murder; two counts of assault with a deadly weapon with intent to kill; and one count of attempted murder. I will say this. I think it's important for the citizens of New Bern to understand this. This was not a random act of violence. We have seen in our country, and to your earlier point, Mayor, that violence is almost commonplace with active shooters. This was not that case. We believe that the motives behind this shooting, although we don't have that now, had something to do with the victims and the shooter. They knew each other. And we are hopeful to have that. I will say this with full confidence that New Bern is a safe place to live, work, and visit. Violent crime downtown is an oddity, and this is an outlier. The men and women that wear this uniform, the men and women that wear the sheriff's department uniform, the men and women that serve this city in any capacity, whether it's public safety or otherwise, are here to serve the citizens. And when the citizens suffer and they perceive crime and the fear of crime, our job is to bring calm chaos. And what we saw this morning were officers that had tenure of less than a year and those that were just about to retire, all working in concert with one another to secure a crime scene, to render aid, and to track a suspect. In the meantime, trying to mitigate traffic and pedestrian traffic and trying to calm the nerves of our community. I will say from the lessons learned, how important it is to be able to provide information as quickly as possible. A lot of moving parts were happening this morning, trying best possible to provide with city leadership as much information as we could. And the importance of providing the media with information is very critical. It is something that every chief of police understands, but it has to be balanced against the needs of criminal investigation. And we hope that we were able to balance those needs out best possible. And I'm happy to answer any questions if you have.
Board?
Well, Chief, I'd like to say thank you for the rapid response that you guys all come together to take care of business immediately. And I want to say I applaud you guys for that.
Thank you, Sheriff. At this time, we do have a couple of officials and citizens tonight. The first one I have is Barbara Sampson. Barbara, if you'd like to come up. Give us your name and address for the record.
All right. Good evening.
Good evening.
Good evening. Your first giving honor to God and my mother, Reverend Dr. Reverend Eva Sampson, and my father, the late Johnny Sampson, Jr., through your unwound memory. I'd like to thank you all for letting me come with this opportunity to say something to you all. I am speaking on behalf, I'm speaking on behalf of the people assembled on the chairman. So if possible, will you all, the questions that you want to ask, will you all please give us something and write? Okay, we have reviewed the draft of the upcoming year's Community Block Development Annual Action Plan, and we have some questions for the board. With regards to three households that will receive funding to rehabilitate their homes, how would these seniors be chosen? What are the criteria for consideration, and how would one apply? When and how would the city make that information accessible to the public? With regards to the six bus shelters, there are only three locations listed in this plan. What is the plan for the other three shelters? As this plan points out, reliable public transportation is something this city desperately needs. However, we aren't sure that these shelters are the best way to achieve that goal right now. What Cox really needs are buses that run more frequently and with hours that service workers who need transportation outside of normal business hours. Furthermore, Cox is a county service. Since our city is offering this funding, would the county be putting money towards this project as well? Finally, why is 20% of the grant being spent on administrative costs? It is common for cities to provide any kind of service with overseeing projects like this. It seems like a significant portion of funding has been spent on things that should be covered in our development service department's normal operating budgets. Why isn't it possible to use all of the funding for projects that benefit the community? These projects seem like a small way to address some of the large problems that residents of New Bern are facing. For example, there are serious drainage issues in areas like Depefield that still require attention and put residents at risk for unnecessary damage during hurricane season. Why aren't we using extra funds like this for improvements that benefit neighborhoods rather than single households? Ultimately, we feel like this year's plan for the Community Development Block Grant failed to offer much to the community as a whole. In the future, we'd like to see the city do more to pursue community input when making these plans. Rather than putting a notice in the paper and passing it away for the people to come to you, we'd like to see more of our leaders coming into the community and actually seeking feedback from a wider variety of citizens. And we'd like for you to unassured, we'd like for you to serve unassured just like you serve everybody else in our community. But I have took some pictures of areas that need to be looked at. So anytime you need a picture, just let me know. I'll send it to you.
Yes, ma'am. Thank you. And I think some of your questions will be answered under item number nine tonight. And there will be a public hearing, and some of those questions will be addressed. And you can come back up during that public hearing and ask those questions again, and we will work through that on that item.
Thank you.
Yes, ma'am. Thank you. Our next one, Loriann Prill.
Good evening. First and foremost, it's never easy to stand here and speak your mind. So my name is Loriann Prill, and I'm here to express my concern and curiosity over two specific items. Number one is the historic marker that according to the Sun Journal article dated June 30th, 2022, was donated to the city of New Bern and subsequently installed at Union Park by Tommy Moore, by Tommy Moore, former Moore Barbecue owner, promoting his Guinness World Book of Records during the 300th anniversary of New Bern. I'm curious about the manner in which the donation was accepted. I cannot locate any presentation to or by the Board of Aldermen nor vote to accept this gift. And my request for information to the city manager, which was replied to today at 3:52 PM states, and I quote, "The marker you were referring to was handled on a department level by Parks and Recreation. It was located behind the flag halls adjacent to the large tree, which is contradictory to the photo in the Sun Journal. And the marker has been removed at the request of Mr. Tommy Moore. In the next month or so, the Board of Aldermen will be asked to consider a policy regarding the process for approval of signage of markers on public property." This still leaves the unanswered question of who accepted the donation and who directed the staff to install the marker. The reporter from the Sun Journal who wrote the article published on June 30th, when asked by me, replied that the marker was accepted by the city of New Bern and installed by the city of New Bern. Yet, there are no records of such acceptance or agreement to install. I find it hard to believe that the Moore family would have gone through the time and expense of creating this self-promoting historic marker without the confidence and confirmation from someone at the city that would be accepted and installed at Union Point Park. Question: Who from the city of New Bern gave Tommy Moore the go-ahead? We deserve to know who or whom accepted this donation and who directed the city employees to install it. According to the city manager's email received again at 3:52, the marker has been removed at the request of Tommy Moore. Seems peculiar to me that today the request was made to remove the marker. Curious as to whom directed the city employees to remove it. Oh, and I checked. It's gone. Another sweep it under the rug move to avoid divulging the truth. It appears that this is just another example of the dysfunctional way our mayor and aldermen and city employees have been operating for many years. Let me digress for a moment. The relationship between officials and the public is fiduciary in nature. A person to whom power is entrusted for the benefit of another is the definition of fiduciary. In this instance, mayor and aldermen are fiduciary to the public and should refrain from violating the fiduciary responsibility while seeking private gains and fulfilling special requests or favors. More importantly, aldermen are prohibited from directing staff to execute tasks. The city manager is responsible for directing the city department heads, and each department head is responsible for directing the city's staff under his or her supervision. The behavior by elected officials is a systematic abuse of power in our city. Who directed the Parks Department to accept and install the marker? We deserve an answer. Concurring with this debacle over the historic marker and possible violation of ethics and abuse of power is the recent photo opportunity which was circulated by the candidate running for mayor featuring New Bern Police and the PBA. This photo and its accompanying wording gives a perception that, one, all New Bern Police and the city of New Bern are endorsing the candidate. And since the photo is in front of the police department on city property, many of the participants are active law enforcement employees, the photo's visual and written message may be a clear violation of elected official codes of ethics, state election rules, and possible violation of the North Carolina General Statute 168-169, City Employee Political Activity. The candidate is a city employee and current elected official, and the officers in and out of uniform on workplace property are employees as well. This has nothing to do with the endorsement of the candidate. The PBA and all city citizens have the constitutional right to endorse whoever they wish, subject to city employment policy and elected official code of ethics. There are rules of engagement.
Thank you very much. Your performance is... Thank you, Mrs. Prill.
Answers, please.
Okay. I think that is all of our officials and citizens at this time. We will go to the consent agenda.
Mayor, I'd like to make sure we approve the consent agenda.
Second.
Motion second. Is there discussion? See and none. All in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, saying motion carries. Let's go to item number seven.
Good evening, Mayor Alderman. At this time, I'd like to ask Colleen to come up and make a presentation on Civic Ready New Bern Alerts.
Forgot the clicker. Good evening, Mayor, Board of Aldermen. I'd like to introduce you briefly to our new mass notification and emergency messaging tool. It's called New Bern Alerts. We actually, unfortunately, used it today for the first time with the incident downtown. We reached about 55 people who have already signed up for the service. What is New Bern Alerts? As I said, it's a free mass notification and messaging platform for subscribers. It's powered by Civic Ready. It offers delivery of our information via text, email, or phone call. Text and data rates may apply. There's also a mobile app, and a picture of the mobile app is in the bottom right inside of your screen. Be aware with the mobile app, anybody who wants to sign up via the mobile app, you will only receive geo-targeted alerts from us and weather alerts. We'll get to what those mean here in a minute. New Bern Alerts is fully integrated with the National Oceanic and Atmospheric Administration as well as the National Weather Service. So all those weather alerts for tornado warnings and other items will be passed through New Bern Alerts and Civic Ready. This platform is also fully integrated with iPaws. iPaws was set up by FEMA. It is a distribution system that allows for highway signs, sirens, things like that to be passed along as messaging to neighborhoods and subscribers without subscription or interruption. An example of this is when you get like an Amber Alert on your phone. That's iPaws. Civic Ready and New Bern Alerts are fully integrated with iPaws. So now to the geo-fencing and geo-targeting that we can do with this platform. Let's say we are, we want to notify residents of a particular city street of a gas leak. We can geo-target our messaging only to subscribers on that street to let them know there's been a gas leak and give them instructions about any possible evacuations. That's geo-fencing or geo-targeting. New Bern Alerts also allows for a two-way engagement. We will be able to poll our audience. So think about hurricanes. When we call or rather encourage evacuations, we will be able to poll our subscribers and ask them, "Do you need assistance evacuating?" Please text back with a one for yes or a two for no. That's our two-way engagement. New Bern Alerts also allows you to subscribe to various groups that may be of interest to you. Some of those groups include, of course, emergency alerts. But maybe you have an interest in city events, general info, street closures, your trash pickup, non-emergency info for the New Bern Police Department and New Bern Fire Rescue, things like child safety seat programs that are coming up. A lot of families around here are interested in the aquatic schedule, summer camps, and also after-school activities. You can, again, when you sign up, click your preferences to receive this type of general information from the city. Okay, so how do I sign up for New Bern Alerts? We've created a catchy, easy-to-remember URL which takes you directly to our website. It's newburnnc.gov/newbernalerts. If you're watching us on TV right now, there's a QR code on the right-hand side of the screen. You can scan that QR code. It'll take you directly to our page where you can sign up and create an account. On your phone, you can go to Google Play or to the App Store and download the mobile app. Or you can text your zip code to 38276. A very easy way to enroll yourself. Again, the zip code and text option is going to opt you into weather alerts and geo-targeted information. What we'd really like is for you to go to the web, complete a profile, and subscribe to those groups. This is some of the marketing that we are using to promote New Bern Alerts to our community. We actually started this on Monday, and again, 55 people received alerts from us today about the shooting incident downtown. So the newburnnc.myfreealerts.com, that also works, as does the QR code, as does the webpage on the city website. Does anyone have any questions about New Bern Alerts?
Is this all free, Colleen?
It is.
Anything, any way you subscribe, either it looks like for the, just the weather and the emergency events, but for the total package of other things, it would be free?
Text and data rates on your phone may apply, but absolutely free to sign up. A couple of other important questions is, let's say you sign up and you want to opt out of messages. You realize it's not what you want. You can respond to a text message with STOP, and we will stop sending you information. It will automatically opt you out of the program. As you are aware, we previously used Code Red for emergency alerts. And folks have asked, "If I was a Code Red subscriber, will I automatically transfer over?" No. These are two totally separate software platforms. So we do encourage you to please sign up at newburnnc.gov/newbernalerts. We will cease using Code Red tomorrow. We feel like this is a much more intuitive platform and a way to spread even more messaging, not just emergency alerts, through this platform.
Colleen, the emergency weather alerts, are they address-specific?
They can be. But if it's a tornado warning, yes, they're generally sent out in the cone of error, I believe they call it, for where the tornado may be headed.
So, Colleen, if a citizen goes in on that website and then they text their zip code, they'll only be signed up for just alerts, or they got to go in, they have to go in and select what they want?
We would prefer they go to the web and set up an account which allows them to opt in to whatever type of information they want to receive: emergency alerts, weather alerts, and those subscriber groups. If they only use the app, that's when they'll only get weather information and geo-targeted info. So we really would prefer the account where you can register. I'd like to receive information via text and email, but don't call me. You can set up those types of preferences for your individual account.
Any other questions? Thank you for that presentation.
You're welcome. Thank you.
It's going to item number eight.
Mayor, your next item is a presentation on the 2022 National Night Out. This time, I'd like to ask Chief Gallagher and his staff to come up and make that presentation.
Thank you, city manager, assistant city manager, Board of Aldermen, Mayor Outlaw. I will be brief. This is really a presentation I wish Sergeant Kevin Bryce to shine in. And what I mean by that is, the beauty of my job is I stand on the shoulders of some very brave and intuitive people, and one of which is Sergeant Bryce. He came to me roughly six months ago, maybe a little bit longer. He had an idea about National Night Out. A National Night Out is a, it is a national event throughout the country, and I was incredibly pleased with the amount of support New Bern gives on that particular night. But because of COVID, things have changed, and because we're in the process of transitioning out of the COVID protocol, Sergeant Bryce came to me and says, "Here's my idea." And I was impressed with his earlier concept and when he was able to flesh it out into what you'll see tonight. I presented that to the city manager who requested that we be more transparent to all of the communities within New Bern to brief them, to obtain their feedback. So at this time, I want to give Sergeant Bryce the opportunity to present his plan, and I hope that you can fully endorse and support what we plan on doing in early August.
Thank you. Good evening. Thank you for having me. Certainly appreciate this opportunity. I stand here with excitement because I'm really excited about this event. I hope you will be too, once I explain the changes that we've made and some of the obstacles we've had to overcome. So if you wouldn't mind, I'm going to read this. There's a lot of important information, so I don't want to just jabber and miss something. So I'm going to read a little bit here first, and then we'll get into more about the event. The objective of National Night Out is to enhance the relationship between neighbors and law enforcement while and law enforcement while bringing back a true sense of community. Furthermore, it provides a great opportunity to bring police and neighbors together under positive circumstances. Over the last two years, National Night Out has been, has not been the same. The New Bern Police Department has missed being with you for this celebration as we continue to strive for great partnership. National Night Out 2022 is going to look a little different as we are moving the celebration to Union Point Park. Since 2012, the New Bern Police Department has caravan through the entire city, stopping in participating communities to converse, answer any questions, participate in activities, and of course, we were fed very well. So we appreciate all the food over the years. Although National Night Out is geared towards law enforcement, we are excited for the opportunity to share the stage with you, our community. The theme this year is community resources. The last two years have been difficult for everyone, so why not show our residents the abundance of resources available in the city of New Bern and Craven County? We currently have over twenty-five community resources represented for this event and feel all participants can take away something from this event. The decision to move away from our traditional National Night Out celebration was difficult and we met with fifteen participating communities on March thirty-first of this year to propose our new idea for National Night Out. Some communities are choosing to continue their own National Night Out celebrations with the understanding the New Bern Police Department will make every effort to have the community policing district officer attend their celebration. We cannot forget about our assisted living facilities as we have reached out to them and will be visiting them with dates and times to be determined soon. On behalf of the New Bern Police Department, we'd like to thank you for your time and attention on this matter. We look forward to a successful, fun, and informational event for all and hope. We see you on August second at Union Point Park." So with that being said, this is the banner that has been made. This banner will hang over First Street and one on News Boulevard to advertise the event. National Night Out is scheduled for Tuesday, August the second, from five PM to eight PM. We do have a rain date set for Wednesday, August the third, at the same times. And just in case you're wondering, it's probably a little small for you to see, but it looks like the colors didn't come through. But anyway, this is a map of the, for the event. Sorry for the colors. I thought they were going to be in orange. But we have over, I said in my, in this, it was twenty-five communities. We have over twenty-seven community, community resources that are represented. So there, you can see that they're going to strategically be placed in the park. We also have five food trucks that are going to be available. A lot of our community resources that are participating have agreed to purchase vouchers from these food trucks to give out to participants that come out for National Night Out so that they can get a meal. So hopefully we'll have a lot more of those resources that are willing to contribute to those sources to help feed some of our participants. We have a long line of first responders. New Bern Police Department, we will have, we have our motors on display, our CANM. We have a seatbelt condenser which basically, you get in, you put your seatbelt on, and it's what you would feel in a crash from about twelve to fifteen miles per hour. So we're hoping to convince you to wear your seatbelt with the seatbelt condenser. We have the Boozen and Booze it bus, which is for driving wild and pae. That'll be on hand. North Carolina State Highway Patrol, North Carolina Wildlife with truck and boat. Craven Community College, B-Lit will be represented. New Bern Fire and Rescue, they've got a great water activity prepared for us that you can see in red. That's where they'll be staged. Parks and Rec. I'd love to, you know, say something to Carrie right now, you know, "Thank you for all your work. Thank you for helping me out with this. Our first time. She's been a pleasure to work with." So I'd like to thank her for that. We do have three bounce houses for kids to participate in. Going back to Parks and Rec, you know, I'm sure they'll have a lot to show the community as far as activities that they have. And I'm trying to think, is there anything else that I'm missing? Oh, Craven Community College is going to be a big part of it with their career centers. They're actually bringing out a eighteen-wheeler to advertise their CDL program. They're bringing out a tractor for another program that they're offering. And they're also bringing out their barber school. The barber school will be offering free haircuts during National Night Out. So I know that's a lot of information in a short period of time, but again, I'm excited about this. It's something we haven't, you know, hasn't been in one location for quite a while. And I'm just, I think with COVID, you know, hopefully getting that word out of here. But I would like to see the community come together. What a better opportunity to bring everybody together in one location. Any questions?
Questions?
Please agree to that.
I want to see all this stuff.
Sir? Thank you. We look forward to it.
Thank you.
Good job putting it together.
Thanks, sir.
Next item is number nine, and I think there's progress and open comments.
Yes, sir. Next item is a presentation and then a conductive public hearing for the 2022 CDBG Annual Action Plan. I'd like to ask Mr. Shelley to come up and make his presentation.
Good evening, Mayor Alderman. We're going to start with a little presentation, but I want to point out that my backup for detailed information, Deja, is not able to be here this evening. So we may have to get back to you on any specific questions you may have. Secondly, as I wanted to remind you that this is just a hearing or preface to a hearing, and there's no consideration for adoption tonight. Any comments brought up at the hearing will then be considered and potentially added into the new plan or into the final plan for adoption next month. All right, so, first of all, the Annual Action Plan, give you some definitions so we are clear on some things. CAAP Annual Action Plan is basically a summary of the actions, activities, and specific federal and non-federal resources that will be used each year to address the priority needs and specific goals identified by the Consolidated Plan. So the Consolidated Plan is a five-year plan that's adopted to provide overall guidance for the following five years. And then each year, the annual plan spells out how each year's allocation will be spent. And so the purpose for the Annual Action Plan relates to HUD's requirements and the requirements for what are entitled, what are called entitlement cities to submit this plan as an application for the actual funding. So to clarify also, the whole issue, the terminology of entitlement is that until you become an entitlement community, you have to apply every year for funding. But once you've reached a certain threshold, then you become an entitlement community and you don't have to apply every year, they provide you with the allocation every year instead. So for this year, our allocation is $269,786, which is an increase of almost $5,000 over last year. And the increase is essentially just based on what the federal government, what HUD receives through the budgeting process at the federal level and as a result of lobbying. So the highlights from the plan itself, first of all, is to indicate that the, since the plan, since CDBG funds are targeted at low to moderate income areas in New Bern, everywhere, but in New Bern, we have a low to moderate income percentage of forty-point-six-seven percent of our population qualifies. So housing affordability remains the greatest issue in low to moderate income communities in New Bern. And so according to one of the partner community, partner organizations, Twin Rivers Opportunities, there are currently three hundred and fifteen households on the waiting list for housing choice vouchers. And so we do coordinate with Twin Rivers Opportunities as well as other partners such as Habitat Humanity for some of the programs. So the house, there are a number of goals listed in the Consolidated Plan. And so this action plan achieves some of the goals in that Consolidated Plan. One of them is under the Housing Strategy section. So housing objective number three for the goal, the goal is to improve, preserve, and expand the supply of affordable housing for low to moderate income persons and families living in the city of New Bern. And so objective number three is housing rehabilitation. And the city will promote and assist in the preservation of owner and renter occupied housing stock. So the Community Development Strategy also has a goal to improve, preserve, and create new public and community facilities, infrastructure, and public services to ensure the quality of life for all residents in the city of New Bern. And the objective there, number four, is for public transit. City will promote, sorry, the development of additional bus routes, bus shelters, and improve public transportation for low and moderate income persons. So directly related to those particular objectives, one of the projects is, the first one we have listed here, sorry, is the administration of the entire program for the entire $269,000. And so the line item here is $53,957. And the description for this, because I know I heard already some concern or question about that, is that this funding pays for staff salaries, wages, and benefits, related costs to administer the program, supplies, materials, mailings, duplications, monitoring, advertising, public hearing costs, market studies, planning activities, and preparation of the actual Annual Action Plan. And you'll, if you notice in your package, there's a consultant that's used to prepare the actual full document, including a lot of the mapping and analysis that's involved in that. Environmental review record, consolidated annual performance and evaluation report, fair housing, and we ran out of space, et cetera. And so that's where all of that, that money goes to all of that. That includes city staff as well as the consultant, all the overhead costs for all of that. So number two is the actual housing rehabilitation portion of the Annual Action Plan for eighty-five thou, over eighty-five thousand dollars. And that then meets that strategy of number three for housing rehabilitation. And the funds will be used to carry out a senior housing rehabilitation program. The housing rehabilitation program will assist up to $15,000 per house. In addition, the CDB funds will be used to cover the program delivery costs. So I understand that this program was similar to the one that had been done several years ago and we're now reinstating it because now we have enough funds to bring that back onboard. But also, we've made some changes to the program because there were some issues about how that actually got carried out. So for one, the applications are reviewed on a rolling basis instead of a deadline basis. And so, and so they're vetted as they come in. So essentially kind of a first-come, first-served basis. But the vetting involves meeting the requirements of the program. In this particular case, will have to be owner occupied and they actually have to occupy the space. Then there also has to be some income. We have to make sure they're in the low to moderate income bracket. So those are some of the things that are used to establish whether or not applicant qualifies. And, oh, so, and then if you, I know what I first did was I said, "Well, three times fifteen is not nearly eighty-five thousand. Where's the rest of the money going?" So once the rehabilitation is begun, there is a lot of construction oversight, preparation, bidding, bid documents, a lot of document preparation to go back and forth with HUD. And so there's a lot of administration that goes back and forth just for even some of these smaller objects.
Mr. Shelley, can I ask you a question right now? How many applicants do you have at the present?
Currently, we have four.
Thank you.
Can I ask a follow-up question to that? They have to have a certain income level too. I believe in the past, haven't we heard that it was difficult to use it because people were not needing that minimum income? And then also too, in the prior slide, it said that it would be for renter. And that's, we've always been advised that it was only for people who owned the homes. I was confused about that.
That's correct. So that, the reference to renter is only in the, it's only in the objective. But in the actual, in the actual project, the funds can't be used for landlord-renter situations. Has to be owner occupied.
To waste forty thousand dollars, forty, forty-five thousand dollars for administration. That's just ridiculous. When we could be helping people fix homes.
Right.
Matt, have questions as well?
Sure.
I've asked this before over the years and never really got a good answer. So I don't know if maybe you can do better. Why do we utilize this funding and pick and choose just a few people every year? Because in the past, if my memory serves me correctly, we've had issues getting those projects done. We've had money left over. Our hand has been slapped because we haven't been able to utilize the funds in a certain period of time. Why do we continue to try to do these projects as difficult as they are?
Primarily because they are requested by the public. So prior to this meeting, several months prior, we held a public, public meeting, which inviting the public to make comments about what they would like the funding to be spent on. And in your packet, there's a list of all the people who attended and the items that they suggested. And the most frequently mentioned item is housing rehabilitation.
So I think the issue is, and I've attended some of these meetings in the past. I think the issue is, is we go out and we paint this picture that we're going to get this funding. What would you like to see done? And of course, people would like to say, "I'd like to have my house fixed." But we don't tell them that it's only going to be three houses and you have to meet this certain criteria. I'm a fan personally of doing things throughout the community that benefits more than just one, one to three homeowners. I understand for these one to three homeowners is very beneficial. But my question is, could this eighty-five thousand dollars with the amount of money and overhead to manage three separate projects, would your overhead, your administrative costs be less if we picked one project, sidewalks, drainage, something like that, for an example, that would benefit the community as a whole?
That's an excellent segue to the next project, if I may. So the next one is the bus shelters. Originally, six bus shelters were identified, right? And so of those six, last year, one was constructed. This year, we're proposing two more of them. The remaining three may come up next year, again, depending on demand, but also the funds available, but, and/or whatever else may be more appropriate to spend it on next year. That's next year. The following year, there'll be a new Consolidated Plan. So I think priorities may even change after that. But in the meantime, we are proposing to build two more of these bus shelters. These, to do that is $130,000. And there's our description there of those, but we have two that are set up for the Bolt Center. And I'll show you that in a minute, as well as on Round Three, Round Three Street.
Do we know the locations this time? I mean, you know, we kind of got tripped up the last time because we didn't know locations. We just knew areas. Are we more specific? And a hundred and thirty is for just two, correct? Even though it's talking about six, it's just for two.
That's correct. That's correct.
And we talk about too, you know, in the earlier goals I'm concerned with about, you know, increasing bus routes and doing all these, you know, more modes of transportation. And we have no control over that. So, you know, unless, can this money go towards carts? I guess we wouldn't want it since we couldn't control. Alderman, Alderman, you are on.
Physical, physical.
Right. You are on the, what's the name of the program that we have? The MPO, yes. And, you know, none of these funds can be used to add additional bus routes or anything like that, can they?
No, this is for physical, physical improvements only. So adding a bus route is adding service.
Because that's what we need. You know, it is good to have that, but people need the transportation. So we do everything backwards, it seems to be that. We build a bus shelter, yet we... don't have the route for the people to get to work.
I tell you what seems backwards to me, that you're spending forty-five thousand dollars to fix up three houses and a hundred and thirty thousand dollars for a dag-on shelter.
None of this.
That just doesn't make good sense to me at all. Those shelters away and fix the houses, if that's what we're going to do.
Two shelters.
Two shelters. That makes it even worse.
You mentioned earlier that the, the man comes from the participants. How many people actually comes to say that we need this amount of money? But the monies are not based on how many people actually come up to say, "This is what we need," because we really can't serve them. So, why are we keep doing it, serving only two people?
We actually had the largest turnout ever this year for that meeting. We had nineteen, nineteen people show up.
Out of the nineteen, how many can, how many would be available? How many would actually qualify out of nineteen?
Oh, wait. Okay, maybe I misunderstood your question or your comment.
Okay, you said you had the largest turnout.
For that, that prior meeting that established.
That established how much money you're going to get, correct?
No, it doesn't establish the money. It establishes what projects the people would like to have the money spent on.
So, we had people, it's nineteen people at this meeting, to say they wanted bus shelters?
Not all of them, no.
Somebody said that?
No, no, right. So, okay, so, on the fourth and fifth last pages of your handout for this, there's a list of the people who attended, and also what they were requesting. If you want me to read them all off, so you have an idea. But.
But we actually had people who wanted a bus shelter.
So, we had.
A hundred and thirty thousand dollars.
So, not in this one, no. So.
So, why are they there?
Well, they're, so, this was established as a multi-year project, one or two years ago, to do the six altogether. And so, it may have been established back then that it was needed. I mean, we did also hear tonight, hear someone voice the need for more transit, and I understand that may, may have meant service, but these funds can't be used for that, but it can support that service with the physical infrastructure. That would be a different discussion for someone else some other time.
Ma'am, can I ask you a question? So, we're receiving two-hundred-and-sixty-nine thousand dollars this year. Okay. And of course, I know you have to take out the administrative costs. So, is it where the remainder of that money could be used for just one project, or you've al, no, yes?
Yes.
Okay. So, who determines that? You let the citizens determine it, or your staff determine that?
It's a combination, first of all. And also, the consultant is involved with this because they also understand the costs that are involved with the various pieces of the process. And probably also the administrative issues with regard to getting things through HUD as well. So, they have some expertise on that side.
So, so in essence, then, with the monies that you have, out of the two-hundred-and-sixty-nine thousand dollars, you take out the administrative costs, the remaining monies that we, that the program have, you can allot that for housing, but if you don't have the applicants to come forth to, to apply for it, then.
That's correct.
That's your problem, right?
That's correct.
Okay. And I thought that's the way it has been in the past. We weren't having enough people to come forth to apply for that program.
And, and, once you vet your applicants who have even fewer, of course.
Okay. All right.
Matt, I'm, I'm looking at the list of the people that were in attendance, and there were a lot of things that were listed that we're not addressing. I have a feeling that we created this plan a few years ago, and we're just trying to see it through, no fault of anyone's. But I'm, I'm looking at this plan, and there's so much about drainage, I'm sorry, the requests. There's, there's drainage, flood mitigation, redevelopment commission, Stanley White. There's a lot of things on here that is important to the community that's not addressed in this plan. Are we at a point where we can adjust these, or is it too late?
No, I would, I would think you could adjust them. Let me, though, however, address the issue of drainage. We, CDBG funds have been used to create that Biddle Street retention basin. I think some two-hundred-and-sixty thousand dollars used for that, and that's a large piece of.
That's separate from these funds.
So, it was previous years, correct?
Because I think, if I remember correctly, we were going to do these type of projects, and we couldn't get the applicants that met the criteria. So, we circled back and said, "Let's go do a project that helps the broader community," which I don't understand why we just won't do that from the beginning. Maybe I'm in the minority on that one.
Yeah, and I suppose that's because there's multiple needs and demands, and only so mu, only a little, you know.
Are there programs we could be doing that bring more money, resources, financial resources to the community and less administrative costs? Are there any other wide, wide array of programs that we could do? One thing's not been mentioned that I park for sixteen years on, is, you know, you go in and spend the fifteen thousand per home, and then you still got four hundred dollar energy, like the water bill, sewer bill, because you got faulty plumbing, you've got a faulty HVAC system. And I have quite a few times tried to get into an energy efficiency program. I think part of the problem that all the thing when I ran into years ago was that the program was for owner occupants, and the vast majority that needed it were tenants. So, that's another thing to me that needs to be addressed. We work very hard as a board and formal boards to get the electric order rates, sewer rates where they are. But in doing that, still, if a person, you know, has very marginal energy efficiency, then what good is it to drop a rate if you've got, you know, need for wind replacements, add insulation, property size, and energy efficient, sheer ratings on your HVAC systems? Has that been considered?
Well, so, each of the applicants indicates what their desired for improvements would be. So, they're, if, if they perceive that they would be saving money by replacing their air conditioning system, more money by replacing their air conditioning system than repairing their porch, then maybe that's what they're going to end up suggesting. I'm not familiar with if we have any advisory capacity to help guide them with some of the information, such as, "If you do this, then you save money on your monthly bill until you get continual payback," as opposed to your suggested alternative. But, that, I, I don't know if that's part of the program or not, but that would make sense.
So, if you're kind of, I think we've talked quite a bit. I'd like to call for a public hearing with the public to come up.
Well, actually, I haven't, I haven't finished the presentation because there's images of the bus, bus shelter locations and things.
Come here.
Okay, sorry. So, we didn't get our aerials in here? All right. So, the Bolt Center bus shelter is to be located along the left side of this big pavement area, which is at the very back. There we go. Doesn't work on the screen. At the very back of this image is the driveway coming into the Bolt Center. So, this is the Bolt Center parking lot, and the bus shelter will be on the left. It will include sidewalk, curb, and gutter, and also a handicap ramp to get up and down into the bus. So, that's the Bolt Center site. And on the right is an image of the location of the Roundtree site. The bus shelter will be essentially just to the left of this post that you see in the grass there. Behind the sidewalk, the street, of course, is in foreground here off the picture. And it also has a concrete pad for it, and then trash can and a bench and all of those amenities that come with both of them. And this all, the Roundtree, Roundtree Street site also includes handicapped accessible ramps at the corner, which is way off to the left on this screen, as well as across the street where it meets the sidewalk for Craven Terrace. So, this is directly across from Craven Terrace, right near the Administration and Community Building. And so, and this particular property, because now we're talking behind the sidewalk, it's on quote-unquote private property, but it happens to be owned by the city. So, that's a city piece of property.
So, these, these two shelters will be a replica of the one that's already at.
That's correct.
Okay, fourth time. Okay, thank you.
So, I guess to summarize, if you need a summary of these numbers, there we have those numbers there. We've been discussing them, though. And so, we've already done the screens. So, we're, if, unless there are more questions?
I, I do have one question for you. One, two? Your staff consists of how many employees?
For the CDBG process?
Yes. Okay. So, then that kind of, my next question is that, have you or your department, I know you just told me you only have one employee, have you looked into any of the CD, the federal CDBG COVID funds, grant monies? I mean, that's like forty-five billion dollars. And I know your short staff or whatever, but has.
I, I don't know if, if they have done that. Are you sure they're directly related to CDBG?
Yes.
Okay.
Now, I don't know what the.
Well, if they haven't.
I don't know what the.
If they haven't, we definitely will, because that sounds like a lot of money.
I think, I, I think if you go to the NC League of, it lists all of that.
League municipalities?
Yes. List all of the grant funding out there. So, I don't know if there's something that y'all, you may want to embark upon, because that's a lot of money that would really trickle down and really help our citizens.
Absolutely.
Okay.
Absolutely.
Thank you, sir.
Yes, thank you.
At this time, I'm going to call for a public hearing. Anybody from the public is free to come up and ask questions, make comments, statements, and just give us your name and address for the record.
Good evening.
Evening.
My name's Michael Moore. I live at fifteen oh-two Lucerne Way in New Bern. I want to speak specifically to the bus shelters. I've got a little bit of history. I live across the street from the one that was constructed and completed, well, shortly after May first this year. That one bus shelter was part of the original five or six that were planned in this project. And that one bus shelter, if I'm understanding this correctly from the information that I had when that was being constructed, cost something over a hundred and fifty thousand dollars. That's one bus shelter. I look at this plan that's in front of us now, and nearly half of the money that's been, been allocated from HUD is being spent on more bus shelters. And they're claiming that they can build two more for a hundred and thirty thousand. So, I'm curious how they're going to be able to do that, especially when this is just an allocation. I doubt seriously that the plan has gone out for bid. And knowing what's going on with labor and material costs today, I have serious, serious doubts that these two bus shelters are going to be built for a hundred and thirty thousand dollars. So, I'd like to know where the additional money is going to come from when they undertake that project and they have the overruns, which will more than likely come. And I also heard in Mr. Shelley's presentation that there is an opportunity to readdress this, you know, the two-hundred-and-sixty-nine thousand dollars, and possibly fragment that again and put it into some other projects that might be a lot more meaningful to the community than bus shelters. I do know that the one at Fort Totten, a lot of discussion on that one, bad location on that one, it's on the wrong end of the utility building, if that was the motivation to put it over there. I know for a fact, because I watch it every day, that if that bus shelter has been used more than three times for cart service, I would be exaggerating. It's used a lot more on Saturday morning, Sunday morning, for somebody sitting down to take a break or sleep off the night before. And that was one of our fears in the first place. These two locations, I think they, if they're going to build bus shelters, these two locations are good ones. They make sense. People might actually use the bus shelter in these two locations, but they're certainly not using the one that cost a great deal of money at Fort Totten. Thank you.
I'm Barbara Sampson. The first thing I wanted to be answered, what do they consider low and moderate income? You know, I need some dollar amounts. And then, the next thing I want to know, what communities, communities did he go in for his hearing? Because I sure don't remember him coming in the Duffy Field community and some other communities. Or with, when employed, you can't do but just so much. And then you have to give people other alternatives about what else is available to them. And that's what I didn't like, you know? You've got to come to more than one community, you know? And I would like for him to share the names and where he went at, because I know he didn't come in Duffy Field. So, you know, and then he say he got my four applications. I know, and he might have four applications, but whether you go ahead and get those four applications. He sure didn't come in the Duffy Field community. He sure didn't come in some other communities. You know, that's my whole problem with everything, you know? We are not being heard. You know, they're going to a certain community, but they don't go on all the communities. One community don't speak for every community. You have to get an all-around picture about what they want. And I don't have anything wrong with the shelters and stuff, the bus shelters. That's not my problem. But I don't think that they need to be spending that much money, but, but then again, you know, that's, you know, the money that we spent. But I think that we can do better things with that money, you know? But still, keep the bus shelters, but you don't have to spend as much on it.
Good evening. My name is Dr. Holmes. I live at ten twenty-three Spuyden Circle. I'm a pastor of First Missionary Baptist Church. Thank you for this opportunity. We do, would like to take some of the heat off of Mr. Shelley. Some of these projects were handed to him. We walked the neighborhood together. We targeted two homes in Duffy Field where seniors were sitting in their living rooms with buckets, taking the waters from their roof. We do think that monies can be allocated and better used. We also think that there's leaders and community advocates that would volunteer to take some of these tasks on that we're paying for. Duffy Field is in great need, and we think that if it's allowed to be able to talk about what's really need to be done and not pick up these bus shelters, which might be important later down the road, but we think that these funds could be better allocated at this point. Thank you.
Hi, my name's Elaine Rousen. I do have a question about the administrative cost associated with the, the housing rehabilitation project. The fifty-three, almost fifty-four thousand dollars, which is for city staff salary, supplies, et cetera, and a consultant. Are these city staff members that are currently employed by the city that are already drawing a salary? And if so, do they get extra money for working on this project? Or how is that, how is that money spent on city? Is there any way we can get a breakdown of how that money is spent?
Matt say earlier that there would be one employee assigned to this?
That's correct. And employees are not paid additionally for this, to answer your question. And the majority of the funds go toward consultants that help put the, put this information together, as well as any supplies and, and any other studies that may be needed.
That, that was the second half. My question is, how much of this money actually goes to a consultant for the project?
Yes, ma'am. It really, it really depends on exactly.
Is there, is there a way that, that does the city of New Bern provide a breakdown?
We, we can provide breakdowns of whatever projects are approved. That's correct.
Good evening, Board. City Manager, City Attorney, I'm Wendy Card. And who is the consultant?
So the overall consultant is Urban Design Ventures. And then the other consultant for the housing rehabilitation project is proposed to be, I think it's McDaniel or McDavid?
McDavid.
McDavid, thank you.
What, what is the amount of the low to mid-income level?
So I'm sorry, I'm at a loss for that one. It is, it's calculated by HUD, and it's based on locality, the expenses that they have calculated, so.
It's in the packet. I don't remember. I want to say it was twenty-four, twenty-four thousand, but I can't. It's based on whatever the average median, it's in your packet.
Right.
I, I didn't have my computer tonight.
Yep, right. It is based on the average median.
So it's on the average median, they take a percentage. So I want to, for some reason, that number twenty-four rings, twenty-four thousand rings in my head, but that may not be correct.
I left my packet back.
But it's in the, it's in the packets. If you go to the notes or you go to the backup, that's part of our packet.
Oh, yes. So that would be on the website in the packet.
Yes.
Thank you.
I'll try to read.
How's it advertised? Like, how do people know that this is available?
That's a good question. I don't know that one exactly either, I'm sorry.
Okay, last question, Holmes.
I need to do this. Who selects the applicants?
Thank you, I appreciate it.
Okay. So the applicants, as the applications come in, they get vetted, and if they qualify, say the first one comes in and they qualify, that's the first one. If the second one comes in and doesn't qualify, and you, we go to, the money is, goes to the next person, number three.
But I believe it's your CDBG coordinator that accepts those applications?
Oh, oh, the person that accepts them.
Yes. Is that what you were asking, Wendy? Who is the person who receives that?
She was wondering how do they dis?
How do they, what, do you just pick the first one to come to, or do you draw the hat?
No, so as they, as they come in, they're evaluated, vetted.
Well, Matt, Matt, before you leave, because can you answer Ms. Barbara Sampson's question? She asked, how does a citizen know where to go to get the application and process?
I'm going to say go to, go to our website and look it up on the Development Services website for the CDBG projects and plans. But I'm going to have to double check that one. I'm not exactly sure where my.
I'll also, ultimately, I'll also say that once, once this is approved and HUD, HUD okay's this, we will do press releases, let the public know as part of the public advertising. We will make sure that the communities that are affected by this are made aware of any funds available, if, if something like the housing program is, is approved.
And the location of where to get, if they do not have internet or whatever, or computer, they can go the location within the city to get that physical application?
That's correct. Whether it be online or, or in person in one of our departments.
Yes, thank you. I guess that explains why I don't know where it is, because it doesn't exist yet, because we don't actually have the program approved yet.
Well, but in the past, I know that, you know, RCS, Habitat.
Oh, yes.
Mercy Clinic, these are our partners. And you can see it in the plan, it talks about the partnerships, the Housing Authority, Twin Rivers, they're partners with them. And so they refer, as you saw, Twin Rivers has three hundred and fifteen people on their waiting list.
Right.
So when they have something and someone's in need of help, they try to refer it. So Dr. Holmes' case, he's out and about in areas looking at abatement issues, can see an elderly person that may be in need, he would come back and say, do we have any CDBG funds that might assist the citizen? So that's another way that they get the word out. So it's been in the years past, different things that I've heard in meetings here, but also the issue has been, is that so many of the people in need did not meet the qualifications, therefore the money couldn't be spent. And that's my concern, that we've got to remove these, because we're losing the people who fall in the gap. That's the problem. These are the people in the gap who don't meet the lower median, but are nowhere near being able to fix their homes on their own. And so that's where I would rather see money for bus shelter do there, because we don't even have the transportation right. Again, that, that really rubs me wrong a little bit, because we're in desperate need of transportation, and we're building shelters when we don't, I don't even know that the route is, will stop there.
So, so it does stop there. It does, we, we verified it does stop there.
That's right. We work with Carts or the county.
So it's for sure.
The issue is, nobody knows about it, nobody uses it.
Right, okay.
So the thought was, if you had the bus shelters, maybe people would start using it. But I think that if you just inform the public that the service is there, it's very affordable too.
Plus, I, I believe the, the current, the cart system is different from actually, I forget what the new program is called, but it's now a fixed route system.
Omnibus.
Omnibus, thank you. Carts is actually a, you know, call them up and they show up, you know, or they schedule you to show up at a certain time and then drive you around to where you need to go on, you know, depending on who the other passengers are, et cetera.
That's the problem, there's a lot of confusion about.
That was Carts, or is Carts. But Omnibus is an actual fixed route, and that's a relatively new thing to begin with. So then you have actual bus stops.
So, so Matt, another question.
Okay.
The criteria set for income level is set by HUD, correct?
That's correct.
So then, there's, how would you go about, actually maybe, is there some way that you can go about, maybe HUD look at the criteria of a person's income and they change that level, so that a person can qualify for, for this program?
Yeah, so they have specific requirements for what you have to provide them in order to demonstrate that they have this particular qualifying income. So there will be pay stubs or, you know, whatever, checks of, I, I don't know, but to validate the, the income level.
Okay.
So if you showed them a pay stub for a sixty thousand dollar a year job, then probably don't qualify.
One more comment, Foster. I think it might be a good idea if we got Urban Design Ventures to maybe come, because they are the ones that work with HUD every day, understand this inside and out, and maybe can say to us, why aren't we spending money on this way? Or, you know, we feel we have people in need here. And that may be a better workshop, maybe even for us, to, to better understand how that works and answer the questions. Because, you know, when it comes to the federal government, I know it's difficult at best to work with them, but we know what the needs of our citizens are, and maybe if we could talk to the consultants who do work with HUD, we might have a better write-up on that. Just a suggestion, I don't know how the rest of the board feels, but might be easier to answer our questions.
Well, if the board would like, we're happy to bring that group in for, for the next meeting.
Well, thanks, Mark, echoing on what's, what's being saying, rural participation is, is a ninety-ten, is that correct? I don't know. It's ninety percent paid by the federal, seventy percent by local county. And when you get into the urban area, it's fifty-fifty. And I think that's the reason, I don't understand that, because to me, the urban area needs the transportation just as much as the rural area. But I think my understanding in talking with county officials is that the participation is much more on part of county, fifty-fifty in, in the urban areas. And I'm just saying, while you're, you're doing all these, these things to increase transportation, and improve that a lot, for folks to be able to get to work and to get to hospital, go to the workforce development, et cetera. I would get somebody in here that knows how we can find more financial resources to bring more transportation, if that's what, if that's what we're ultimately trying to do, because I think there's a limitation on what the county's going to do. Carts or Omni with the participation. I go to Jacksonville and other cities, and they're just, there's, there's a proliferation of buses in there versus New Bern. There's obviously other funding sources we're not looking into.
But just to be clear, the CDBG funds don't have a match at all?
Absolutely, yeah.
Thank you.
We're still on a public hearing. Anybody like to come forward, ask questions, make comments concerning this item? You're more than welcome to do that at this time.
I would, I would say this. My name is Alakra Brown. I think it would be better used if it goes with the guidelines. With multiple, multiple homes instead of one or two, if they have immediate need, maybe a floor that needs, needs to be repaired, some windows, they may have a electrical problem. And you could get a lot of homes repaired. Matter of fact, the organization, one of the organizations I'm in, we, we do that, the Duffy Field Finance Project. We do little small grants. We go out and get applicants. We've done roofs, we've done doors, we've done some windows, we've done some electrical. And we service a lot of people with a little bit of money. So I think if you take the cost thing down, now, I do know, because I, I'm around in that area, I live in that area. I've seen the one, the young man was talking about, the Fort Totten one. He may be looking, but sometimes when he's looking, it might not be that person there. But I've seen people using that right by the, the light bill place. But I know on Biddle Street and in Craven Terrace, I've seen those folk stand out in the rain, or they stand on an abandoned porch to get out of the rain, or whatever kind of weather it is. But my biggest thing is, if you cut some of the administrative, I don't know how much, maybe half, and then split up that money for multiple homes, and get those things done, a lot of people could live comfortable, and, and instead of trying to get the whole house done. You know, because if, if I'm living in a house and I have several windows, matter of fact, I know some ninety-year-old people right now that's, that's living, and I've done a lot of free labor helping. And I got a person right in this house right now, and, and here, they had a ceiling cave in it, um, got, got, got a car. I said, okay, we get the material together, and I get it straight for you. And they, they live uncomfortable now. But I'm saying, if the city of New Bern would stop throwing money away, I'm not throwing no stones, but I've seen year after year, year after year, we get consultants after consultants, and it takes sometimes months or years paying these consultants and don't get a whole lot done. So we got to figure a way as leaders to pull this money together. Now, I know a lot of you on the board, and I've seen what you've done. I know what you're capable of, but I'm just saying, it's a lot of citizens are hurting, you know? And if we pull this money together and find multiple families, that we could do little profits, but it's, it's, it's a necessity, that this thing get done, we can serve a lot of people, a whole lot of people with that, that little bit of money. But we got to find a way to, to take some away from administrative, because the city of New Bern got some great workers, and some of them are very qualified. And some of these consultants could be cut out if we use what we have that's already paid, that's already on the salary. And we just got to come together and figure a way to be smart with the taxpayers' money and serve our citizens, especially the ones that, that struggle. And that's all I have to say. Thank you.
Thank you, thank you, sir. May I make a motion to close the public hearing?
I'm sorry. My name is Terry Holloway, ten oh-one Main Street. That list that you got, that you got from Mr. Shelley, well, Mr. Shelley, nobody here probably knows, he only been in his position like two months. So he's putting all these arrows in his back, you know, he's not really the person that started it. But that list you got, Matt, is my name on that list? Because what they're saying, my name is on that list.
Yep.
Okay, that's, that's what I want to talk about. How did that list get to Mr. Shelley when what you guys are talking about, Mr. Dr. Caldwell, we all were writing this stuff with Dr. Caldwell? So how did that get to Mr. Shelley?
Terry, did you go to the meeting that was at Development Services? I remember seeing that.
Right. But that, that's what we had in Craven Terrace?
No, no, no. It was the one at the Development Services office that they had specifically about this plan. It was on a Monday night or something.
Because I, I thought we wrote all of that stuff in, I just had a situation, so my memory might be a little messed up. I thought we had that information with Dr. Caldwell.
You did, you had, that was a different meeting. This was for the CDBG plan, and it was held, I believe, D Asia right there.
But they, but they said they're talking about drainage and stuff. So I specifically remember writing the drainage stuff down, and along with a lot of other people, and a couple of people said something about some shelters. I can't see spending a hundred and thirty thousand dollars on a shelter, that's a whole house. So that's what I'm trying to figure out, I'm trying to figure out how that, that list got to Mr. Shelley.
Matt, didn't you, I think your staff took down notes, if I remember correctly, they went around the room that night, and everybody gave their names, some of them gave their phone numbers, and they gave their, their desires.
So, yes, the meeting was March seventh, and that was the meeting that D Asia held in the conference room there, and there were some people that were actually on the phone, some that were on the screen, I believe Zoom.
Right.
And then there were a lot of people actually sitting in the room, and at that time, a lot of masks.
And Dr. Caldwell was on, was on the, on the, on the thing, right?
No, no.
Okay, I, I might be crazy right now, I don't know the situation, so.
No, he had his own, he had his own input thing for, that had to do with the portable housing.
Okay, all right.
But, yes, and, and you're at least logged in for, on that meeting that you asked for a bump for the drainage.
Okay. Because I just want to make sure, because it sounded awful like another meeting that I was in, that was nineteen people in the meeting, you know, because I counted them.
That was for the housing.
I counted them, I counted them.
Yeah. That was for housing.
All right.
Thank you. There's no other citizens want to come forward? May I make a motion to close the public hearing?
Second. Motion and second to close the public hearing. Is there any comments or, seeing none, I'll favor the motion, say aye.
Aye.
At this time, on that particular item, that was a presentation, a public hearing, there's no action to be had tonight. Is there anything else on that item before we go on?
Yes, sir.
Let's go to item number ten.
Mayor, next item is, consider a resolution authorizing the manager to execute a memorandum of understanding with the Marine Corps Air Station Cherry Point. This will establish protocols whereby the New Bern Police Department and Cherry Point will assist one another on an as-needed basis to provide non-reimbursable law enforcement support. The MOU does not create any additional jurisdiction or modify existing jurisdictions for either party. In part, the MOU will allow the police department to use MCA's training ranges, at the term of the agreement, it's for ten years. Happy to answer any questions you may have.
Okay. Before we have questions, I would like to hear assistant managers' comments on this, your background, and I know you were deeply involved in this.
Yes, sir. They, they pretty much, the Marine Corps down at Cherry Point, they had the MOU agreements with several cities and locations around. They were, for instance, with the law enforcement side, they, they were already agreeing to utilize each other's facilities, and then they just formalized it last year. And New Bern had not signed on to it, but pretty much everyone else, to include the county, had already signed on to this agreement.
And I, I think when I was talking with you a little bit about this, the base has its own simulator, some, a little bit different from the one we have with the.
That's correct. They have what's called a shoot house, and it's a little bit more sophisticated than what we have, but for different training exercises. But it's something that's more field-related for our officers, it, it's really good training. And they've, in the past, I believe, our officers have participated in it, now they just want to formalize the process before they go and utilize that facility.
Okay.
So, Margaret, is this something that the chief of police has, what's his opinion about? This is a great enjoyment of, of Marine Corps? field related for our officers. It's, it's really good training. And they've, in the past, I believe, our officers have participated in it. Now they just want to formalize the process before they go and utilize that facility.
Okay.
So, Margaret, is this something that the chief of police has, what's his opinion about? This is a great enjoyment of, of Marine Corps?
It, it is. They've, like I say, I believe they've already utilized, and they were actually requesting to utilize the military's facilities, and before they could go utilize it now with the MOU in process, in, in, in process now, they just have to have this in place before they can go, continue to utilize these facilities.
Okay.
Mayor, I'd like to make a motion then that we adopt a resolution authorizing the city manager to execute a memorandum of understanding with the Marine Corps Air Station Cherry Point.
Second. Motion and second is their discussion. Seeing none, let's have a roll call, starting with Alderman Bingle.
Alderman Bingle?
Yes.
Alderman Astor?
Yes.
Mayor Outlaw?
Yes.
Alderman Kinsey?
Yes.
Alderman Best?
Yes.
Alderman Odom?
Yes.
Motion carries, item number eleven.
Next item is consider a resolution approving the sale of 604 B Street. After receiving an offer of two thousand dollars from Charles Diggs in the city of DeCarlo, the bid was advertised, but no upset bids were received. The property is a point one nine acre vacant parcel that was acquired by the city in two thousand and two, and has a tax value of three thousand nine hundred dollars. The bidders have spoken with staff in Development Services about their plans for the property, and have expressed a desire to pursue the process. While the property is owned solely by the city, proceeds will be split with the county to satisfy provision in the conveyance for outstanding unpaid property taxes due to Craven County. If the sale is approved, the county will receive eight hundred eighty one dollars twenty five cents, and the city will receive one thousand one hundred eighteen dollars and seventy five cents, including the cost to advertise.
Nobody has any questions. Mayor, I'd like to make a motion that we adopt a resolution approving the sale of 604 B Street.
Second. Motion and second is their discussion. Seeing none, let's have a roll call, starting with Alderman Odom.
Alderman Odom?
Yes.
Alderman Best?
Yes.
Alderman Kinsey?
Yes.
Mayor Outlaw?
Yes.
Alderman Astor?
Yes.
Alderman Bingle?
Yes.
Motion carries, item number twelve.
Mayor, next item is consider a resolution approving the sale of 2101 Woodland Avenue. After receiving a bid of ten thousand five hundred dollars from Kenyon Hughes for purchase of this property, the bid was advertised, but no upset bids were received. The vacant point two five acre parcel has a tax value of twenty thousand dollars, and was acquired from North Carolina State Highway Commission, now NCDOT, back in nineteen sixty. The triangular shaped parcel was created by the relocation of Highway seventeen. The bidder has spoken with staff in Development Services about their plans for the property, and has expressed a desire to pursue the process.
Mayor, if there's no questions, I'd like to make a motion to adopt a resolution approving the sale of 2101 Woodland Avenue.
Second. Motion and second is their discussion. Seeing none, let's have a roll call, starting with Alderman Bingle.
Alderman Bingle?
Yes.
Alderman Astor?
Yes.
Mayor Outlaw?
Yes.
Alderman Kinsey?
Yes.
Alderman Best?
Yes.
Alderman Odom?
Yes.
Motion carries, item number thirteen.
Next item is consider a resolution in support of North Carolina Department of Transportation confirming a speed limit of fifty-five miles per hour on State Route one zero zero five between Parker Road and Highway fifty-five. These streets are owned and maintained by the North Carolina Department of Transportation. After completing an engineering and traffic investigation, DOT is confirming a designated speed limit of fifty-five miles per hour. The proposed resolution signifies the city's support of this. Once DOT has confirmed the set speed limit, an ordinance amendment will be presented to the board to modify the city's schedule of maximum speed limits to add this designation.
Mayor, if there's no questions, I'd like to make a motion to adopt a resolution in support of the NC Department of Transportation confirming the speed limit of fifty-five miles per hour only. SR one zero zero five between SR twelve forty-two Parker Road and NC Highway fifty-five.
Second. Motion and second is their discussion. Seeing none, let's have a roll call, starting with Alderman Odom.
Alderman Odom?
Yes.
Alderman Best?
Yes.
Alderman Kinsey?
Yes.
Mayor Outlaw?
Yes.
Alderman Astor?
Yes.
Alderman Bingle?
Yes.
Motion carries, item number fourteen.
Mayor, next item is consider a resolution in support of North Carolina Department of Transportation reducing the speed limit on NC forty-three between Briarwood Lane and a portion of Gracie Farms Road. These streets are owned and maintained by the NC DOT. After completing the engineering and traffic investigation, DOT is recommending the speed limit be reduced from fifty-five to fifty miles per hour. The proposed resolution signifies the city's concurrence. Once DOT has officially reduced and posted the speed, an ordinance amendment will be presented at a future meeting to modify the city's schedule of maximum speed limits to reflect the change.
I have a question on this one. I guess, Mr. Hughes, why are they only wanting to drop the speed limit five miles? Because that is a very congested area, and there's a lot of traffic in that area. And especially with Lake Tyler there, at that entranceway. I mean, this was, really wasn't discussed with the city? More detail for us changing that speed limit?
No, and I'll ask Mr. Kabley to come forward, but I believe they had done a study, and this was their recommendation to, to lower to that speed limit. Al, if you'd like to add?
Yes, Admiral Mayor, members of the board, Alderman Best, the traffic engineering and speed survey that was conducted by NC DOT revealed that it needed to be reduced. So that whole stretch, and that's one portion that's missing right now, and that's what they're asking for concurrence.
What do you mean missing? That one section is missing?
It, it's not confirmed in our ordinance that it's fifty, and so that portion needs to be identified. And that's what the certification will do.
Okay. I mean, really, I, I don't have a problem with this, but I would really love to see the speed limit on there dropped to forty-five because of the congestion. I mean, we got one, two, three, housing, four housing areas open in that area, and I just, you know, this would be an opportune time for them to drop that speed limit. And the problem is, and here's my problem, the reason why I'm saying this, is because, three years ago, maybe I'm gonna say, I requested flashing yellow lights. We put in at that forty-three fifty-five corridor right there, because we were having so many accidents there. And the people were coming off of forty-three, and that's where the accident was happening at. So that's what I was, you know, actually, really, if you could contact NC DOT and see if there's some way of lowering the speed limit lower there, I would appreciate it. Is that something that you think may come about?
We, we could certainly table this and reach back out to DOT and bring the board's recommendation back, if you'd like.
I would like that to be done, because that is a very congested area, and there is, and I look at the people, the citizens that live in Lake Tyler, across the street with the Mobile Home Park, and then we got, can you think of the other ones? Planters Ridge and Gracie Farms, and that's a really, really busy area. So I would appreciate that we table this until you can get back with DL, NC DOT, and get some kind of confirmation or whatever they decide that is best.
Alderman Odom?
Yeah, I'm, I'm fine with that, too. I'm just curious why the DOT is asking us to support this. It's a DOT highway. It's not even in the city limits.
Yes, it is.
Mr. Williams?
Lake Tyler is, but that highway is not.
It, it's in the city limits, sir.
The highway is?
Yeah.
Yes, sir.
Well, and then, and then a mile over, we have.
Initially, the discussion was whether or not it was in the city limits or in the ETJ, but when we looked at it, it appears it's in the city limits.
So, so we, we skip, we skip a parcel, and then we, we own, or we have city limits of the highway until we get to a residential neighborhood? Is that true, Mr. Davis?
I don't know. I, I'm not to the map.
Why, I mean, my question is, is why would the city limits be along a highway when we don't have city property on either side of it?
It goes all the way up to Beach Grove, Trailer Park.
We, we can, normally within the ETJ, we have law enforcement authority up to a mile outside of the city limits, but I'm not sure if that is what this is here. And, and we can look into that, sir.
Prior to, maybe three years ago, the statute allowed cities to extend their limits along highways and create a noodle to join a satellite jurisdiction, and that may have been what happened years ago.
So, so the only comment I'll say is, if you want to talk to DOT, they're asking us to support their request to change speed limits? How about they follow our request that we've sent them on numerous occasions for things?
I concur. Do we need to vote on that, Scott?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay. Do you want to make the motion for?
Yes. I make a motion to table item number fourteen until city manager can get back with, or Mr. Kabley can get back with NC DOT to make these changes, before these changes are made.
Second. Motion and second is their discussion. Seeing none, all in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, say. Motion carries, item number fifteen.
Next item is consider an ordinance for the demolition of 1503 Oak Drive. Staff is seeking to demolish this structure located at this address. The home is in a dilapidated state. Letters were mailed to owners in February, March, and April of 2020, and there's been constant communication from the city to the property owners since that time. To date, no permits have been applied for, and the structure remains not compliant and unsafe. All utilities have been removed, and the estimate for the city to demolish the structure is six thousand eight hundred dollars. In your packet, you'll see photos of the property in question, as, as well as a list, chronological list of how the city has reached out in their efforts to have this issue abated.
Mayor, I've asked staff, Alderman-elect Brentson asked me a question about this, and I was wondering if staff could just give a brief outline that when we do a demolition, we put certain liens or restrictions on the property. That's how we acquire it. And you, I'll let you clean all that up. But essentially, sometimes the cost of demolition exceeds what the residual value will be once it's left. So it doesn't always mean that we're going to recoup our losses, but I'll let the experts kind of fix what I just muddled up, if you don't mind.
Yeah, I don't, I don't mind jumping in there. The, the statute provides that the cost of demolition becomes a lien against the property. And if unpaid, it is collected as an unpaid tax. If it's still unpaid, a tax for closure is initiated to recover that unpaid lien. But as you correctly point out, just because the city acquires title to it doesn't mean that the fair market value of that vacant lot is going to ever meet the cost of demolition. Sometimes it does, usually it does not.
Thank you. Mayor, I'd like to make a motion, if there are no further questions, that we adopt the ordinance for the demolition of 1503 Oak Drive.
Second. Motion and second is their discussion. Seeing none, let's have a roll call, starting with Alderman Odom.
Alderman Odom?
Yes.
Alderman Best? Alderman Kinsey?
Yes.
Mayor Outlaw?
Yes.
Alderman Astor?
Yes.
Alderman Bingle?
Yes.
Motion carries, item number sixteen.
Mayor, next item is consider a budget ordinance amendment for fiscal year twenty-two, twenty-three. The budget amendment will recognize a brownfield grant in the amount of five hundred thousand dollars, which requires no match. Funds will be used to inventory, prioritize, and conduct environmental site assessments. Funds will also be used in part to develop cleanup plans in certain areas of the city.
Mayor, I'd like to make a motion that we adopt a budget ordinance amendment for fiscal year twenty-two, twenty-three.
Second. Motion and second is their discussion. Seeing none, let's have a roll call, starting with Alderman Bingle.
Alderman Bingle?
Yes.
Alderman Astor?
Yes.
Mayor Outlaw?
Yes.
Alderman Kinsey?
Yes.
Alderman Best?
Excuse me, I stepped out. Are we on item number sixteen?
Yes.
Yes.
Um, yes.
Alderman Odom?
Yes.
Motion carries, item number seventeen.
Next item is discussion of B R P projects. I would like Carling to pull this information up on the screen. So at the June twenty-eighth meeting, the board voted to divide the six million seven hundred four thousand three hundred fifty-one dollars amongst the six wards of that funding. Two million has been allocated for stormwater projects. Three hundred fifty thousand dollars will be shared among wards one, two, and five for the redevelopment commissions of the Cotter House project. And four hundred thousand has been reserved for the Norfolk Southern Covert until further discussions held between wards four and five. So there are two million dollars in, in stormwater funds. And at the last meeting, there was discussion on where that project is located, and it's in ward five. And there was discussion about possibly using some of those funds to go toward the North Hills project. So staff needs direction, and I guess the board's gonna have to vote on how you want to allocate those funds for stormwater projects.
I think part of the discussion would be for staff, might be the board's agenda, to update the, the board on if that's a time of essence, or where, what type of future growth will possibly be in any way impeded, et cetera, by the lack of the design and completion of that capital improvement. If, if that is worthy of discussion, which might in some way motivate the board to take that very serious. Is anybody with staff able to do that? Mr. Kabley, can you go up?
Well, before Al comes up, Mayor, this was a very robust conversation that we had about this, four hundred thousand dollars. And at the last meeting, city manager said, made a statement that the Norfolk Southern Covert, which that applies to this four hundred thousand dollars, was not a project that staff had, had, have even started on. Am I correct, Mr. Hughes?
That's correct. We've done the work on that project.
Okay. And I don't know how Mr. Kinsey feels about that particular area, because it would serve both of us. So.
Well, I agree with the mayor to let staff go ahead and take a look at that. They're the experts. So let them come back to us and share with us what can, and what we can do to move forward, if we have any other entities out there that may have an interest in participating. So I'd rather move forward with staff to let them look at that.
So a question to you, now the night that we've discussed this, why didn't you, you know, conversate on this? I mean, I asked a question, was this in Derby Park? And I was given an answer that Derby Park, yes, that was in ward four. Because my, my decision here, Mr. Kinsey, is that I want my money to go towards a stormwater project for the North Hills Salmon Street. Now, I have no problem with staff looking into this project to see, is, if it is a dire emergency, and if that's the case, then I'll be amenable of sharing some of those funds towards that project. But if it's not a dire emergency, I want that four hundred thousand dollars, as I said, was discussed, it was said to me, you can go back and look at the board meetings, that staff members said it was Derby Park, and that was in ward four. So.
Like I say, I'm gonna let staff handle it. I'm not an expert on any of that, so I'm just gonna wait till staff come back to the board and share the information.
Well, Al, do you have any information on this particular covert, the Norfolk Southern?
Yes, the information that I do have, I'll clarify that the improvement sits within ward five, but the benefit is clearly within the ward that Alderman Kinsey is in. Perhaps the confusion would be what does the improvement serve versus where its location is. But we did confirm that's where the improvement is, is within your ward.
It's within my ward, but it serves more ward four.
Drainage wise, the benefits could be attributed to that ward, yes.
I think this is a situation that maybe the two Aldermen and staff really ought to sit around the table and work through this. I think, and I'm, I'm not the expert here, but I think there are certain acreage areas for future development.
Yes, sir.
That are not affected by that covert, and there are others that are affected by that. Would that be fair?
Yes, sir.
And so, at some point, if you want to continue to see reasonable growth in your city, it's gonna stop out there at some point without that covert. Is that?
Yes, sir.
Pretty accurate?
Sir.
So other, other than that, I think that if you have to hire a surveyor, an engineer, or somebody on your staff can sit down with the two Aldermen, and I don't know, again, I know that y'all want to get this straight, but I think that the areas that I am aware of that might be affected are more in Alderman Kinsey's ward than are in Alderman Best's ward. Is, and if I'm wrong, please. ward, is, and if I'm wrong, please correct me, because I do not have empirical data, I just have a limited knowledge base to know that. Is that fair?
Yes, sir.
Well, I don't have a problem with sitting down with staff and Alderman Kinsey and looking at this area and to see, because the bottom line here, this is our city, this is our citizens, and that's what we're supposed to support, our citizens, and what's best for our citizens. But again, I will say for on the record, I wish this had been cleared up the night that I asked which ward that it applied to, but I have no problem with getting together, Al, with you and whomever, and we can talk about this.
Yes, ma'am.
Okay? Thank you, sir.
Okay, so the next item is-
What, excuse me, I think I'll remember-
No, go ahead, go ahead.
Had some-
I'll ask eventually. The next item is several board members have reached out with, with certain projects, so we're just gonna go, go down the list that you see here, and the first one we have here is Middle and Pollock Street. We've had an issue with crosswalk safety, so we, we've come up with pricing to put a crosswalk in, which is approximately a hundred thirty thousand dollars. That includes LED lights in the surface of the road that would, that would blink, motion sensors as people are coming up to the crosswalks, a lot more safer than what it is now, or reinstalling the light. The light cost would be approximately three hundred fifty thousand dollars, would also include a crosswalk as well. One of the things we, we've seen is the city currently has sixteen stoplights in the city that, that we, we control. None of those lights are synced together, and one of the goals moving forward is over a possibly a four or five-year plan to work at upgrading all of those lights to sync into where if there's an issue, police or public works remotely could, could just tap in on the computer and make some adjustments as need be, but that's for a later project. So, the first item is, is the crosswalk.
I think in discussing it, I think you need to further explain too, the cost of the traffic light, it's not just the three hundred fifty thousand, I believe, because of the syncing of it and whatever, we could, we're gonna talk about a million dollars, is that correct?
If, if we were to sync all, all of the lights, all sixteen lights, that, that's gonna cost approximately a million dollars over time. That's why we really have to look at doing a phase plan over a, a certain period of time.
So, at this point, we'd be better to spend the hundred and thirty and at least get that, that crosswalk in there, so it has some benefit, and it's better than what we have now, because I want to make sure I understand, it's lights that are in the street that will shoot up, so as people come into the crosswalk, it, it would set it off, is that correct?
There, there are motion sensors on each side of the street, so, and this, this is really for the cars that are, that are coming into the intersection. Those LED lights are, are very bright, and you see that, it's very clear that people are in the area, and so-
Amazingly, yeah. Does it also provide for the hearing impaired, not hearing impaired, sight impaired sensors as well, where it would be allowing somebody to cross the street?
Yes, it does.
Because we had talked about that-
It is ADX, that's for-
Okay. I would prefer, then at this point, we'd recommend the hundred and thirty. I think down the road, we, you know, we've talked about the traffic light, but until we can have the money to get it all right, what's the sense of putting it in there? And then emergency happens and we can't sync it, you know?
I disagree, but that's not-
Okay, well, that's, we can agree with disagreeing, that's fine.
I just, I just think you're throwing a hundred and thirty thousand dollars at a crosswalk when you just need to spend another two hundred thousand for the stoplight there.
But how are you gonna sync it, let's say, train, this, that, whatever, you know, as you're coming down that street?
It's no different, it's no different than the other two you got out here.
They're not synced yet, though, are they?
None, none of them are synced.
None of them are synced.
They're all timers at this time. I just know that is a dangerous intersection.
I, I think I, I do have enough money there, if, you know, and, and the board can look at it. I'm, I'm not totally in control, it's a recommendation. What I'm here to say is, I've heard from the citizens, it is an issue. Many times I've sat in front of the Chelsea, of course, I live right there, but I've sat in front of the Chelsea and seen accidents, see people trying to come across the street, and it's dangerous. People speed, they don't pay attention, you know, on their phones, they're doing whatever, and they're not paying attention, and it's a dangerous crosswalk. At the time, in twenty-ten, it was removed when Broad Street was redone, and the narrowing of Broad Street, because there used to be a traffic light, everything, and they thought it would make it more pedestrian-friendly not to have a traffic light there. But you can't see when you're coming out of Middle either, to take the left onto Broad, believe me, it can be a mess there, so... How does the rest of the board feel? Do you have an issue one way or the other?
Well, if I had a, a firm, accurate price, if the two hundred thousand dollars was, was a firm price-
I'm going back, but they sang three fifty, is that your firm price?
I heard three, so-
Three fifty, right?
Three, three fifty, because we'd have to do some engineering. Three fifty for the engineering, crosswalks would be included as well as the light, yes, yes.
But three fifty?
Three fifty.
Yeah. We are two hundred at the last one, but then he got a better price, I agree. I know that you're that. I mean, I, I want to do the right thing. I want to get it safe, is what I want to do, is get it safe, so, the traffic light, I want to do it.
So, and, so in ward one, that was one project, if you're looking at the, the light, then there was discussion on electronic speed limit signs. The cost is thirty-five hundred dollars each, and then you mentioned two of those, which are seven thousand dollars. The other thing was a Riverwalk fence upgrade. From, from the convention center all the way over to Sky Cell, we have, we have old fencing, a lot of that is rusted, it's been damaged over the years, and so to replace that, that final run to, to the end of the fence line, that's approximately a hundred thirty thousand dollars.
Well, I would have enough money in there to do, to do that, so, I'm okay.
Foster, did you ever find the old fencing at Union Point Park?
We reached out, actually talked to the former Public Works Director, that, that old fencing was discarded when it was replaced several years ago. So, on ward one, if anyone would like to make a motion on these, we'll, we'll just go by ward on these projects, that will be cleared.
Then I would like to make a motion that we spend the money as allocated in the handout to include the three hundred fifty thousand for the light at Middle and Pollock.
How much?
Three hundred and fifty. That's, because that's the number they gave. Of course, if anything's less, the money will come back into the pot, right?
That's correct.
Okay, second.
Where are you getting three hundred fifty thousand from?
See at the top part, if you look under where it says, projects and planning direction provided to seek estimates, right underneath it says Middle and Pollock-
Okay.
Light, three hundred and fifty.
I'm just looking at it in the line item right now, okay? See ya.
You get a second on that?
I'll second, first.
Do I need a roll call now, Scott?
No, sir.
Okay. You heard motion second, is there discussion? All in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed saying.
Thank you.
Next item is ward three. Working on several things with Alderman Astor, but the one we're bringing tonight is electronic speed limit signs, looking at four of those, a total amount of fourteen thousand dollars.
So, I'd like to make the motion that we spend fourteen thousand dollars for four electronic speed signs for Old Airport Road.
Second.
Motion and second, any discussion? Seeing none, all opposed to the motion, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed saying, motion carries.
On ward four, the recommendation to, to do work on racetrack road improvements, that amount is for one million seventeen thousand three hundred ninety-two dollars, that's the estimate on what it would be. Pending the discussion with ward four and five Aldermen and staff, we're gonna hold off on that with the stormwater to see exactly where things go. Same thing with ward five, there was a recommendation to do five hundred thousand dollars in the Norfolk Stormwater related projects. We will hold off until we're able to sit down with, with the two Aldermen to discuss the Norfolk Southern project. Then we move on to ward six, so I've had a conversation, and emails back and forth with Alderman Odom and, and Mr. Brentson, and some of the items that, that they brought up was New Bern Memorial Cemetery Shelter with seats installed for funeral services, price is approximately seventy-five thousand dollars. That would include about a forty by forty-four shelter for that.
Foster, you know what capacity we have left at New Bern Memorial, roughly?
We have a, a good capacity there, years, and when I made a presentation to the board several years ago, it, it's a long time. We haven't even gone into one of our largest sections yet. The next item was Union Point Park infrastructure improvements, specifically those improvements were to address the stormwater-related issues that we have, when there's minimal flooding there, that water just gathers, and so what staff looked at is increasing the size of the stormwater drains, as well as putting the pump in, where if the water is in there, we can cut on a pump and pump that water out without any more flowing in. The next item is sidewalk gaps in ward six, so the Aldermen discussed several, several areas of sidewalks that, that they would like to work on, and so that's approximately two hundred thousand dollars. And then there was discussion on neighborhood signs improvements, and there are, there are about five or six neighborhood signs there. The, the signs are there, they're in decent shape, they need to be rehabbed, and so staff looked at approximately twenty-five hundred dollars for those.
Bobby Good, I'd like to make a motion to approve the projects listed for ward six using ARP funds.
Second.
Motion and second is there discussion? Seeing none, all in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed saying, motion carries. One thing I, I would, I would miss, I did not point out in our earlier discussions of ARP funding, and Supra, you might remember this, it's probably about, what, about twelve years ago, Allen Berger with Race Series Thea, one Christmas, and I don't remember who funded it, you might, illuminated the Cunningham Bridge, and ever since, if, if anybody has those photographs or videos of what that bridge looked like, it, it was, it was a very iconic moment for New Bern, something that you normally see in big cities, and I've always been, I thought about it after the fact, but please don't in the future forget about it at some point, putting that lighting system-
During the three hundred?
Yeah, yes, probably was.
It was a trade years ago, it was-
Who, who, who funded that? Do you remember?
The three hundredth committee.
Yeah, and, and it was temporary.
The three hundredth committee had its own budget.
They had, they had the temporary line.
It was beautiful.
Yeah, it was a knockout, but, and, and at that time, there was some discussion with the board, and financially at that period of time-
I wonder what it would cost.
Huh?
I wonder what it would cost.
I don't know, it'd just be something on the staff, I don't know.
Part of their budgets.
Beautiful.
I would like to throw this out there to ward one, three, and six.
Oh, there you are.
Throw it one out.
Throw it one out. He already knows what I'm gonna ask. If you don't have any other projects within your ward that is gonna take precedence over the project in ward four or five, and we have that discussion with staff and see where this Norfolk Southern Railroad's going, if you would be willing to maybe ship some of that money over to that project, I'm just throwing it out there before anybody other Alderman asks you.
I would, Barb, but I have, I'm down to the pennies now, after I put that traffic light in, so, thank you. That's it.
Okay, what's the score on here?
I think, I think that's it.
Okay.
We will continue to work with-
Oh, yeah.
We'll continue to work with, with Aldermen on, on additional projects and continue to come back to the board as we have the chance.
You have anything else on the item seventeen?
No, sir.
At this time, we're gonna get to appointments, starting with Alderman Dingell.
Uh, yes, sir. I would like to reappoint Steve Strickland and Julius Harham to the redevelopment commission.
Second.
A motion and second is there discussion? Seeing none, all in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed saying, motion carries. Do you have other appointments tonight?
Yes, sir, thank you.
Alderman Astor?
None tonight, sir.
Alderman Kinsey?
Not, sir.
Alderman Best?
No, sir.
Alderman Odom?
I have one, but I'm still working on it.
Okay.
So, I'll wait.
Attorneys report?
Nothing to be worked on tonight, Mayor.
City managers report?
Two, two things I'd like to talk about, this, this past Friday and Saturday, we were quite surprised with some of the, the storms we had, had a considerable amount of water in a very short amount of time on Friday night, approximately three, three inches, some neighborhoods got a little more, some a little less. Then on Saturday, in certain areas of town, got about two and a half inches, inches, and I believe Taverna got, and some of the other areas got around five inches of rain, so Public Works was busy all weekend addressing issues, and we really only received complaints from two areas, that was Taverna and Greenbrier, so we were with staff and Alderman Astor at Taverna for half a day on Monday, looking at all of the issues down there, and so staff is coming up with some, some plans to try to alleviate some of those issues, and staff has also been to the Greenbrier area to look at those issues as well. Next item that I'd like to talk about, I'd like to see if there's interest amongst the board to create an ad hoc committee with, with the Aldermen and staff to look at coming up with a policy for signage and naming, or anything that's going in public spaces. Want to make sure that we have clear understanding and direction from the Aldermen on, as we move forward, on how signage, any, any type of, any type of naming that goes on into a park or public property, on how we're gonna proceed with that.
I'd be glad to serve on it, or I'd be glad for three Aldermen to serve on it. We have any?
I should include buildings in that as well, you know?
Absolutely. I, I think we're gonna have to include buildings, we're gonna probably have to look at banners and, and things like that, just to, to get the whole, whole gamut of things.
I'd love for staff to come up with some draft recommendations for your committee to review.
Right, and then maybe then come to the, have a small committee or workshop.
I think maybe some benchmark cities, if you could look at three or four, five, that you have similar amenities like the city, and, and then maybe report back next meeting or something, and then we can maybe get a little more motivated to do an ad hoc, and some of the board members will call back to board.
I think, just for a little historical reference, too, I think a lot of this started with Union Point Park was done, it was done under the auspices of Swiss Bear, who was in partnership with the city of New Bern to get that park redone, and in order, because the city didn't have the money, in order to raise the funds to do the walkways, they sold bricks, they sold fence lines, they sold benches, everything to put your name on, and as a matter of fact, the name of the fundraiser was Put Your Mark on the Park, so that's what it was called, and they raised, you know-
Mr. Ballinger's thing.
Right, Mr. Mr. Ballinger, who was an Alderman at the time, was the chair of that committee, and they raised the money to, it was a fundraiser, I guess for Swiss Bear, plus they funded all of the bricks and the, the ironwork and everything in there, so I just think there's never been anything, and I think then people would go and put a plaque under a tree, or do something somewhere else without any real process, so I think it's timely, and I think this is a good thing to do, so I would like for staff to bring something back and let us look at it.
So, you're, so Attorney Davis, so at this point, you're saying that there's not an ordinance in place that actually would cover what can and cannot be put in a perpetual park?
That's right.
That belongs to the city?
Yes, ma'am, the Board of Aldermen controls that process, and there is no written city policy at this point.
So, then I guess that in order to do that, like the mayor said, reach out to the, to our, some of our surrounding cities to see, but also, isn't there something that we might need to reach out as well, Mr. Davis, to, towards general statues concerned, in school of government, no?
No, ma'am, no, ma'am. The board, the board has the authority to control all public spaces, so the board will set the policy, and the city manager will carry it out.
So, there's no general statue that governs parks?
No, ma'am, not, not naming rights, or fundraisers, or trees, or benches, no, ma'am.
I mean, part of the beauty and the idea of, of what we have at Union Point was only accomplished because of fundraising, and that's kind of where we are now, is to, for the future of Martin Mariel, Lawson Creek, Union Point, et cetera, we're, we're at a point where this policy should have been put in place years ago.
Yeah, because that, I was alluding to the fact that when it comes to Henderson Park, there are, there, that, that park is governed by, isn't it, Mr. Hughes, it's a perpetual park, so it has to remain a park?
That's correct.
So, that's, so what law is covering that?
Well, the naming part does not apply to anything with, with the National Park Service on the land water content. on the Land Water Conservation Fund grant.
That's, thank you very much.
Yes, ma'am.
What else on your city managing report tonight?
That's it for tonight, sir.
Alderman Odom, do you have any new business tonight? You can have some old business if you want to.
You know what, I'm not, nothing tonight, sir, thank you.
Okay, Alderman Best?
Yes, I just want to remind our citizens that please go out and vote. You have up until the twenty-third for one stop. And the day of election is July twenty-sixth, so please go out and vote.
Something else?
That's it.
Alderman Astor?
Yes, I'd like to first say thanks to Chief Wean or Marvin over here about the jet. The jet looks great. That was one of my projects when I was Puddle Works Director, and I was glad to see it painted. It looked really nice. You guys did a great job getting that and taking care of it. As the city manager said, we had a mess over in Taberna. We had, my rain gauge had just a shade over five inches fell. And we had some flooding over there that I didn't see during Hurricane Florence. If anybody, I have to thank Avery and Al and the Puddle Works team for out there during some bad weather and trying to get things cleaned up. And I know Avery left at eight o'clock at night and went and actually got the piece of equipment to get a pipe that was blocked up because of the concerns that we had, some additional rain. And the water was already within six or seven inches of some of the people's homes. So as soon as Avery got back and he got that pipe cleared out, the water started going down and everything was great. But if anybody is interested, I do have photograph proof that Al, of Al, in a ditch cleaning it out with his bare hands. So I'll be glad to share that with anybody that would like to see it. I actually shared it with the city manager that night. I too was going to remind everybody to go out during early voting. And, but thanks, Al, thank you very much for the attention that I received over there for the residents in Taberna. Because I think everybody recognizes now that we've got a little bit of a problem over there. Thank you, that's all I have.
And Al, I don't know where and why it happens, but every time you do something like that, there'll be some fire ants involved in it. Yeah. And speaking of flooding, Alderman Bingle was very involved in coordinating the American Flood Coalition Meeting. That was a Zoom with Tony Ellen and an expert of the twenty-seven member staff on the national level. And if you, and I don't mean to take your thunder here, but if you, inform the public a little bit of where we are as far as the coalition and.
Well, we had a great meeting with members of the CARES group. We had, I believe, four members of the CARES group who attended the Zoom meeting. And Tony did a great job in just discussing the resources that the American Flood Coalition will be able to provide. And really, their main job is, as Alderman Best talked about, there are funds sitting at the state level that have been very difficult to access. And they will be a group that has money behind them, that will provide manpower to start lobbying the state and trying to access some of these grants and other funds that we can use for flood mitigation. And that's the most important thing, is how do we mitigate for our next event? Because we know it's not if, it's when. So, you know, it was good information. We know who they are now. They had some good information to share with us about the community rating system, which we heard a lot about early on during the flood, or when we had the hurricane and our inability to bring it together. But we are learning more about it every day. And we are in the community rating system and working to make it better and better all the time. So it was a good meeting, and I was glad that we were able to get the CARES group in front of them. So it's great, thank you, ma'am.
New business?
Yes, sir, just a couple things. Scott, can you please tell me what the law is regarding skateboards in our downtown, either on the street or on the sidewalk? Lately, we've been having several people on skateboards. I've gotten some complaints from merchants because they're weaving down the sidewalks. An elderly couple was almost knocked down. There were some other things, they were going in the street, back onto the sidewalk. So I'm not sure exactly, and of course, we're gonna, we'll call it, I'll tell the merchants, call the police. But I want to make sure I understand the law.
Yes, ma'am, I'm going from recollection, so again, I don't have the words in front of me. But my recollection is no skateboarding in public spaces or on public sidewalks. But in the last year and a half, two years, the board amended the ordinance to allow skateboarding in the streets to, for purposes of travel. We've got some folks that live downtown and use it to get around. That's different than playing in the street, that's just like riding a bike in the street. So kind of using it for transportation, but other than that, nothing on the sidewalks.
So they shouldn't be on the sidewalk?
No, and actually, no bikes either on the sidewalks.
Okay, so we need to get out there. So I want to thank Chief Gallagher. You and your staff have been extremely responsive in the last week to all the little issues, including the skateboard issue and some speeding and other things that are happening on National Avenue. And, you know, again, we have such an amazing police force, and I just want to thank the staff. They're always ready to answer our questions. And Chief, you've done a great job in following up on some of the issues we're having downtown. And I'm very, very grateful for the service you provide our citizens. And then I just want to mention that, you know, they say when people pass away, you hear about it in threes, and I've had more than enough in the last week. But I wanted to mention Thelma Chadwick. So I knew Thelma many years ago, Miss Thelma Chadwick. And she was the director of the Senior Services Program here, probably in the eighties, late seventies, early eighties. And she worked with my mother-in-law, and I knew her well. And I found out late yesterday that she had passed. And I'm so sorry about because she served the community, she loved her seniors, and did a lot to work in the community to serve that population. And then Joanne Frank, who I have to say was just an amazing woman. She gave me my first job when I came to New Bern in nineteen eighty. I worked at Belk's as a clerk, and she hired me. And she's a native New Bernian, has lived here many years. And she was ninety-two years old, so to her family, I extend my deepest condolences. And what a great lady, many people remember her from working at Belk's for many, many years. And then the last thing I just want to mention is that if any citizen has any concerns or questions about me, about what I do, about how I serve this city, about businesses I own, or don't own, or whatever, I am just amazed at how much misinformation continues to be out in the public. Please call me, I answer my phone, I return messages as best I can. I was on vacation last week, sorry, Pastor Johnson, so I did miss your first call. But I do respond to people, and I give them the correct information. And so if somebody said something to me last week and asked me a question, I said, "No, ma'am, that is not true." And she went on, she says, "But my neighbor, who knows everything about New Bern, told me." And after I pulled up the information, I was able to show it to her. We had a long conversation. She thanked me profusely and said she was so sorry that she had listened to someone who didn't have the facts. So I want to urge everybody in this season of whatever you want to call it, meanness, misinformation, bullying, we've heard all of the words. But if you have a question, if you have a concern, our numbers are public. Any one of us here, please call us, please ask. Don't spread information that is incorrect because one person writes it or three people write it on Facebook. It's, I would appreciate it because I've been able to give some very good information to people regarding anything I own or don't own, anything that I've done, my service to the city and the community. I'm very happy to answer any questions. So please, you know, give us all a break, as Aldermen. This is not an easy job. It's never easy to be yelled at. It's not easy to have somebody accuse you of something that you haven't done, to call you names, to curse at you. I believe we've all experienced that in one way or another. That's why most of the public doesn't do, doesn't want to do this job. But we try to do it to the best of our abilities. Are we always right? No, sometimes we do get it wrong, I admit. But I have never been disrespectful to anybody. I have never, you know, been rude to anybody. And if you're mad at me, then you should just very calmly try to have a conversation with me. And again, I do try to return phone calls. If I missed your phone call, I'm sorry. Sometimes I have to admit, I have a three-year-old grandchild who thinks the phone is part of her being, and she loves to, she can touch buttons better than anybody. And I do remember about a month or so ago, she erased a couple of my voicemails. But anyway, I would appreciate that, and I think the rest of my colleagues would appreciate that as well. So thank you, thank you for my, I'm a citizen too, and so I believe I should have public comment as well. Thank you.
Alderman Astor, do you have something?
Yeah, I just would like for the city manager to take a few minutes and give us an update on the Henderson Park project, as well as the BP building project, where we're at, where we stand?
Well, we, let me talk about the Henderson Park project first. And as we gave an update at the last meeting, we have completed the new basketball court. We have ordered a new shelter that will be coming in that will also serve as a gathering place. It'll be closer into the parking area, that will also serve as a farmer's market and other types of activities. A new fitness course will be installed, as well as lights on the basketball courts. And there will be several seating areas with bleachers and benches throughout. And there will also be some, we like to call them blacktop games, adjacent to the basketball court, which will include things like bingo, hopscotch, foursquare, things like that over there as well, as well as an addition to the playground. So a lot of things are going to be coming, just like with anything else. When you order supplies, it takes a while to get here. And so waiting for those amenities to come in, as soon as they do, staff in Parks and Recreation will get started on that. So the park is going to be looking good very soon. And that also includes a restroom coming in as well. We've been pretty busy with the BP project. We had to reach out to Congressman Murphy's office to get some help, and he is there doing some work to get some more information for us. But I think we're going to see some progress with that. If we're gonna have to file for arbitration in the next day or so.
Foster, I did forget to ask a question. Remind me, the exterior cameras on City Hall, was that in the budget?
It is in the budget, and we're waiting on pricing now. That will also include when the new annex is built, the inside of the elevator, the inside of stairwells, inside, basically the, any of the gathering spots all around the perimeter of City Hall. Sidewalks on both sides, as well as the parking lot in the back.
So forgive me of my ignorance on the IT aspect, but do those things require like perpetual maintenance? Or is it install it and you're good until they're outdated?
Well, they will require maintenance and upgrades, just like with anything else. But the camera system that the city has been adopting really in the last five or six years, we have the capacity to be able to record for a certain amount of time before it takes over. So if any issues occurs, we can pull that and provide that to the law enforcement as needed, if there are any things like, anything like that that occurs. And so we have really done a lot of work with installing cameras, not only in our parks, but also our facilities, and it's really helped out a lot.
Thank you. The reason I ask is I had some signs taken from the Board of Elections on Sunday in the middle of the day. And the county has some great cameras, and they work very well. So it's going to be interesting to see how that turns out.
Any other new business?
Yes. Foster, I was going to ask it earlier when we were discussing the ARP funds, but did you include, or I guess I should be directing this to Al, in the Parks and Recs budget about the improvements to the existing shelters in the cemeteries? You know, the shelters in the cemeteries, was cleaning them up, upgrading them, or whatever?
So there was no funding in place to add new shelters. That's one of the things that Alderman has wanted to do with one of his shelters. We will continue to look at that. There are, there are basically evergreen, greenwood cemeteries. They don't have a lot of barrels there, but they still do have services. And so we're looking, talking with staff to see what we can do to provide something for the folks that are buried that have services in those cemeteries.
Okay, and.
As well as City Road Cemetery as well.
Exactly. I just want to say thank you to all of our employees. Thank you for hard work and dedication. We couldn't do it without you. I just want to say thank you, thank you. And also, Foster, I mean, I know it's going to get hotter, and I just want to reiterate about our employees that work outside to make sure that they're taking adequate breaks and getting plenty of fluids.
Absolutely, and our safety coordinator does a great job of reminding all of our city employees on a regular basis to stay hydrated and take breaks as they need to, to make sure that we keep our employees safe.
Thank you, that's it.
Foster, I want to thank you for helping me out for the last two weeks with assisting the citizens out through the city. And calling me, and your response has been great. And I thank staff when I call them, you know, I wear Charlie out a lot, you know, especially the chief and Jordan, you know. And they are right there when I call on them. And Al, your guys, they mentioned his name tonight, Avery. Avery's the guy here, I think that he don't have a home. He lives in the ditch all the time with his staff and making water flow. And I really appreciate the assistance that you give me when I call in with a person that really needs assistance. Thank you again for your help.
Okay, any other business tonight? We need a closed session tonight?
Yes, sir, I'm sort one forty-three, three eighteen eleven, eight five, to discuss the potential acquisition of real property.
So. Do we have a second? Motion and second, all in favor of the motion, say aye. Aye, all opposed, same, we're going to a closed session.